Nice try. Not yet. No, you're embarrassed. That's what you're saying now. Well, this minute between 5:59 and 6 o'clock is stretching out. There we go. Thank you for joining us at the March 11th City Council meeting. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I present the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Fontaine, could you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember John Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Missy White?
Present.
Councilmember Dan Hahn?
Present.
Councilmember Melinda Cox?
Present.
Councilmember Josh Hahn?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Julius Stube?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Fontaine. We'll move now into approval of the agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda before we discuss.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Larson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cox. Now, for discussion on the agenda, we have four changes that I'll read aloud, and then we'll look for somebody to make that motion to make the amendments. So the first one is, under number 11, new business action, we need to remove Tammy Hightshue, our former clerk, from the municipal court account. So we'll add that to the top of number 11. After that, still on number 11, we'll add Police Captain Kelly Waugh to the itinerant account. Then moving to number eight, new business non-action, I propose that we reverse the order of A and B so that Mayor White is sworn in prior to the corporal's swearing-in ceremony. And lastly, if you go back to number 11, we'll strike item G for another date. Council, do you have any questions on those proposed changes?
I do have a question in reference to G. What is the reason for striking it for a later date? Lance, do you mind?
Yeah, they reached out and said they don't need signatures right now, and so I don't know if the Wyoming Life Resource Center is still planning on some changes at this point before we sign that MOU. So it wasn't quite ready.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions on those changes? Then I would take a motion to amend the agenda per those four changes.
Move to approve as amended? Second.
Great. Adam, we're jumping ahead to move to approve as amended. Do you want to see two votes? Do you want to see a vote on the amendments and then a vote on the original agenda? Great. So actually... Yes, thank you. So we're moving to approve the amendments, not the agenda right now.
Okay, move to approve the agenda amendments, excuse me.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman White. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cox. We're now voting on the amendments to the agenda. Councilwoman Jay Hahn?
Yes.
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 And yes, those amendments are approved. So now we need to approve the agenda as amended. And that table is on, I'm sorry, that motion is on the table. So we're going to move to a vote, Councilwoman Larson.
Yes.
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 And yes, the agenda is now amended. Our third item is a public hearing. This is for ordinance 2025-4, fixing and determining the mill levy necessary to be levied to raise sufficient money by general tax to meet the current expenses of the city of Lander for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025. I'll open the hearing at 6:03. Treasurer Laura, could you please introduce and read this? Thank you. Yes.
45 pages.
An ordinance fixing and determining the mill levy necessary to be levied to raise sufficient money by general tax to meet current expenses of the city of Lander for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025. Mill levy of eight mills, no more or no less, is hereby fixed, determined, and declared necessary to raise sufficient money by general tax upon the property within the city of Lander, Fremont County, Wyoming, to meet the current expenses of said city of Lander for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025. This ordinance shall take effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication as required by law, and the ordinances of the city of Lander.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion from councilmembers? Any comments? This is our standard practice. We do this every year. Seeing no discussion from councilmembers, then we'll move now to public comments on this public hearing of ordinance 2025-4. If you'd like to give comments on this, please approach the microphone, turn it on, and state your name for the record. Any comments on Zoom? And any comments from those here in the room? Then we will now close this hearing for ordinance 2025-4 at 6:05 PM. We'll now move to item four, which is our general communication from the floor. If you have a public comment for the council, please approach the microphone, turn it on to state your name for the record. You will have three minutes. This meeting is being recorded, and please be aware that this is not a time where the council will engage in dialogue with you, but we might address your questions or concerns during our updates later in the meeting or after the meeting. So any public comment for tonight? Mr. Woolwine?
Charles Woolwine, and congratulations, Councilwoman White.
Thank you, Mr. Woolwine. Is that microphone on?
Hello, hello, hello. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I emailed you guys something I was going to say. In the light of, it's sort of adultish in nature. So in the light of the fact we've got these wonderful children here, tonight, I think I'll just, won't do it, and I'll wait till next month. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woolwine, and thank you for emailing us your comments as well. Other comments from the floor?
Can you hear me? Okay. Okay. Christina George. Do I need to wait for that to stop? Start? Okay. Okay. Good evening, members of the Lander City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I stand before you to advocate for a clear and comprehensive policy regarding the use of social media by city agencies, particularly the Lander Police Department, during investigations. While social media is a powerful tool for communication and information gathering without proper guidelines, it can be misused, causing harm. Many of you are familiar with the incident that brought me here today, but for those who aren't, here's a brief summary. On March 3rd, a photo of my husband was posted on the LPD's Facebook page following a report from a resident who believed they saw him stealing a package from porches, quote, "asking for public assistance as well as awareness. This person has stolen from a porch in our community. If you see him or know who he is, please call the Lander PD so we can hopefully recover property as well as stop him from doing this more," the post read. "Our family respects law enforcement and understands social media's role in solving crimes. We do not fault the police for using my husband's photo or asking for help identifying him. We also do not fault the individual who reported that they believed to be a crime." However, we have two primary concerns. The first one's lack of qualification. As I said to Councilmember White last week, words matter. The LPD's post did not use words like alleged or suspected, but implied my husband was guilty. The post by not, the post by not providing this context publicly accused him without due process. This is a serious issue, libel, defamation, slander. The second issue is delay in response. The post was made quickly, just 39 minutes after the report, but when I called and clarified, my husband had simply retrieved a wrong, wrongly-delivered package. It took over two hours to update that post during the time the post was shared widely, and County 10 published a story based on the uncorrected post. My husband is a longtime member of this community, and his reputation and livelihood as a small business owner were jeopardized. I do want to thank Police Chief Peters for calling on March 6 to offer an apology. We appreciate his acknowledgement of the department's negligence in the follow-up public post on Facebook with the same sentiment. However, the delay remains a significant issue. I reached out to the police department multiple times, two times on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, but it took less than an hour to accuse my husband publicly, over two hours to correct the mistake, and three days to issue apology. This incident underscores urgent need for a social media policy for the LPD, one that ensures responsible use, respects individuals' rights, and operates within the law. Such a policy will protect both the public and effective investigations. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. George. Are there other comments from the floor? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Joseph Lopez. I've just been hearing about this project for the last few months, and I was just hoping for an update on it. Oh, it's, it's really difficult to pronounce. Propoja. So there's a, there's going to be a wall that was proposed and is in the process of construction, to my knowledge. And I was hoping if there was any updates from city council about how that's progressing. And also, the note from the design passed out says that at about 65% level of the, to the final design and construction, potentially affected landowners will be reached out to. I wanted to know if they are reached out to, and they, they pose significant concerns about the wall's mitigation efforts. Would that result in project changes, or we'll take it under acknowledgement and then completely ignored? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I'll ask staff to address your questions during their updates. Other public comment? Thank you all. We'll now move into mayor and council updates, and let's start Councilman Jay Hahn, Josh Hahn, with you.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Cox?
Thank you. Just a couple of updates. Golf Course Board will meet on Monday, St. Patrick's Day. That's how I remember it. LITA's continuing to move forward. There's a couple of projects that will be happening and continued discussion. I'm not technically the liaison, although I would put my case back in since we have a potential change in that. And then the Community Services Block Grant continues to operate. They're doing some initial work with their assessment tool, and that, that project really is a project about moving our community members that are in need of assistance out of, out of poverty, essentially. And so it's a way to up the, up the game as far as getting better education, better assistance, incorporating them within the community with resources that they need in a really intentional case management process. And they're doing a good job of moving that forward and that project forward. And then the chamber, we meet in the morning. So that's all my updates for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cox. Councilman Hahn?
I have a, I have a comment, but I think I'll save it for next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman White?
Thank you. A few things. I think folks have likely seen, but I am never going to pass up an opportunity to toot the horn, of the Lander Middle School Nordic Ski Team. Both boys and girls teams handily won the state event a couple Saturdays ago. And also today, racing at Collegiate Nationals, three former Lander Middle School, High School skiers are now skiing for UW. And Shayla Babbitts was 15th today, Caleb Simonson 5th, and Diego Lobato 3rd. So it's really fun to think about where, where kids have gone from remembering them as middle school and now what they're capable of. Also noting that the whole statewide Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources will be, their whole department is meeting here in Lander next week on the 18th through 20th. So you might see those folks around. And I want to give a shout out. The person organizing has done an absolutely fantastic job of showcasing Lander alternatives for when they have downtime from shopping, meals, the various restaurants, activities to do. Really think it's wonderful, and I think it will be a great boon to the community for that. And then lastly, for air service, both January and February had over 50% increase in passengers year over year from last year. And again, our Januaries and Februaries of last year were pretty spectacular. So 10 years ago, we thought it was nuts when a consultant said we could potentially have 24,000 to 25,000 inflamments, but we could actually achieve that this year, which would be incredible. So good news from that standpoint. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Larson.
Yes, thank you. Just to update you, the Propoja Conservation District is meeting tomorrow, so I'll be at that meeting and, and continue to, to serve on this, the Solid Waste Board. The, the other thing I would like to state here this evening is that I, I think that you've done a great job as Mayor Pro Tem, and thank, thank you for your, your service there.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. I'll add to my update then, that it's been such a privilege, and I'm really grateful for your confidence in me in taking on this role. I've learned quite a bit, particularly in having so much more experience with staff, who I knew were thoughtful people who really cared about Lander, but seeing that every day, the diligence and the thoroughness and the creative thinking you all bring to the meetings and the issues that you're trying to solve, your love and devotion to the community is so apparent. So thank you for being here. And thank you to our phenomenal police department as well. It's nice to see all of you with your families in the room tonight, too, for the celebration that's going to come. On a less exciting topic perhaps, the tree board is still chewing through some of the ordinance changes, and we'll meet with staff, I hope to say, in a week, maybe this week, to have some discussions back and forth with our attorney and public works on that ordinance. And then I hope to, you know, have a proposed ordinance from that tree board in the coming, probably months, probably not months, but we'll bring that before the council soon. I have no other updates from my liaisonships, although Councilwoman Cox, you make a good point that we will need to look at some switching now that, when Councilwoman White becomes our mayor here in a few minutes. Let's move into staff reports. Chief, I'll start with you.
Everything's good on our side. We have a little delay in getting the yearly stats to you. They are done. So we want to set that up for the next meeting so we can go through it, because it's going to take about 30 to 45 minutes to truly explain it correctly. But just to give you a few highlights, our activity is up 100%. We, through the due diligence and planning and how we've been allocating, we've actually drove shoplifting down by 30%, which is unheard of. So in this, in the same sense, shoplifting is down 30% for the fourth year in a row. Our Part 1 crimes continue to drop. So from a jaded view, Lander is about the safest community you're going to live in, in the state right now. But I kind of have a jaded view on that one. Also, just another highlight, you know, our use of force is almost nonexistent. We had over, almost 18,000 contacts documented last year, which is up 100% from four years ago. We had, our use of force was 17 out of 18,000. So when you put that in a calculator, it doesn't even give us 0.001% anymore. It gives me an error. So that, an error is a good thing. So for the standpoint, we'll do that next meeting, but you know what? Things are good. All crime is down. The guys are doing an awesome job.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? No? Great. Yeah, I think we look forward to that full report, but those numbers are phenomenal. And so thank you again to your officers who are responsible for making Lander such a safe place. Lance?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few project updates. So tank and pump station job is getting closer. The pump station is nearly operational. We're getting ready to do some of those disconnects and reconnects that need to happen to automate the system. I hope that we could do a, maybe a work session in the field and do a field trip so that you guys can see, you know, what was built and what everything does, and we can explain that to you. So maybe in the future, we can do a 5 o'clock start out in the field and come back for 6 o'clock if you guys are good with that. And now we're gearing up for the three construction projects. So McFarland Drive, Lincoln Street, and Bishop Randall are all starting to move into semitals, approvals, pre-construction meetings, and get ready for better weather. So you'll see a lot of construction going and be able to manage that. And then we're working on some of the infrastructure, you know, the last 10 years that we'll be bringing, kind of the improvements we made, where we made them, and then also talk about the future planning of those infrastructure projects, what we're looking at per year, and some of the ideas we have behind that in future meetings. So look to that shortly, and I'll give a presentation on that.
Yep, that sounds great. I think that's scheduled for our next work session on the 25th, the capital improvement plan update. And I'll just say, well, actually, I'll hold this. Councilman Hahn, please.
I heard the frost levels pretty deep. Should people still run water?
Yeah, we were just at four feet about a week ago still, and, you know, I think that that's still great until you hear from us to keep running, and we'll keep checking manholes. And when we see some recession from that frost depth, we'll put out notices over social media when it's safe. But this warm weather is deceiving from the surface when the ground levels are still pretty cold and frost drives down. So thanks for bringing that up. That's a good point to make.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cox, did you have a comment? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you waved. Other questions or comments for Lance? Great. Lance, would you please address, give us an update per Mr. Lopez's comment about the city park and flood mitigation, where we are in current planning for that, and how we'll take, when and how we'll take public comment?
Sure. We were going to give our card out and give information to have a direct meeting on that, but we can also talk about that in just in a brief overview. So that is two projects now. And so we're looking at the downstream below the bridge with Strike Consulting Group, and looking at developing capacity and who would be affected on a couple of alternatives and plans downstream. That's just kicking off, so nowhere near 65% or a time to talk to landowners. The upstream portion, we're just having conversations with Whiteout about the bridge and trying to figure out what that may look like. And so I think there's some questions as far as developing capacity, turning that bridge with the abutments and the riprap into something that has more capacity. That has to happen, and we're working through those issues. If that's a no-go, I'm not sure what this would look like on the upstream. That would affect the whole project. So we're waiting for the Corps to be able to move forward on that, and at some point be able to give more information once that design becomes something that we think is getting closer to 65% or could be feasibly built.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Assistant Mayor Fossum?
Thank you. I do have two business cards for the gentleman who asked about the flood. I don't remember your name.
Joseph.
Joseph. Joseph, I have two business cards for you. One is mine, so that you can contact me, and one is so that you can write your name on the back. And then that way, we can connect, and I can meet with you after hours with whomever you want to bring, and I can discuss that project in detail. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
In other news, our open house was a success. We had 80 to 100 people. Not everyone signed in, but we had more than 80 people sign in. Thank you to everybody who came, and thank you to all the councilmembers who showed up for that also. We are going to continue that venue as long as it is successful. I figure with about 100 participants, we'll have another pre-scheduled one in August. We've been doing them about every six months. Strategic Plan, your next work session next week is a special work session. It is dedicated to the single agenda item of strategic plan. The councilmembers were all asked to fill out a survey regarding your personal priorities. If you have not filled that out, I've set one in front of you, and you can get that to the lady whose contact information is in the front. Very important that we hear from the council prior to next meeting. There will be little or no staff in that meeting so that the councilmembers can speak with the facilitator based on their personal ideas. And I would entertain any questions.
Regina, I'll, I was going to jump in and remind about the FCAG survey, but would you actually share that update?
Absolutely. So many surveys. There is a separate and distinct survey for all councilmembers and administrative staff from FCAG, which is a Fremont County Association of Governments. That survey is trying to get a pulse on how important elected officials and key staff think our key services in Fremont County are. Key services being things like air transportation, ground transportation, ambulance services, economic development, those types of key services. We know as council that we're all going into a budget deficit area in the next few years, and FCAG is trying to get a handle on how we could manage those essential services should we think they are important enough to fund. So I sent that email out today. I'm like all of the staff and council to fill that out by March 20th. If you have troubles opening up that Google form, let me know. I can do a PDF version, and you can fill it out by hand.
Thank you. Any questions on that? That's in your inboxes now? Thank you. Perfect. I think we had the highest participation of all municipalities on the last version, so let's do that again. Treasurer Laura?
As you guys know, I spent a couple weeks this last month during the legislature and watched our property taxes get cut. This was an ask by citizens to have a reduction in tax. It was a consensus of most, among most mayors and council that since this was an ask from citizens, and they should see what the services are that are being provided by that, and not balance our budget on the backs of our employees when we're thinking about taking these cuts that we're going to take for our loss of revenue for our property taxes. Right now, TARA's numbers, so with the property tax hit is going to be hit on our residential property. Well, in the city of Lander, that makes up 70% of our assessed mills, the assessed valuation. That's a larger number than, you know, most areas. That's why it will affect us for residential property. So the people that are qualified for the 50% of the, they're over 65, been paying property taxes for over 20 years, that hit alone is a 200, forecasted from TARA is a $286,000 hit. She's still working on the cut that we'll get from the 25% hit, but I'm, I'm really putting at about $400,000, a $400,000 loss. We would like, when we're working on our budgets, that we're looking at what services we're providing under those, with those taxes, and those are the things that we look at, making a reduction to, and not doing it to employee benefits or, or to our staff and our wages.
Questions for Treasurer Laura? Thank you. We've been waiting for those numbers with bated breath as we watched the legislature work on those relief programs. And so knowing that we're looking at a range of 700K is helpful to start for our planning. And, and I agree, we have a really lean and efficient staff already, so I think that we can look at addressing the shortfall without looking at reductions in our staffing departments.
When you look at it in the scope of our entire budget, property taxes make up 10%, but when you're still cutting $400,000 out of your budget, it's substantial in where the impact's going to be hit at. So I really think that we need to, and Lance has been looking at, you know, when you look at what we're mandated by law to provide, we have a lot of fluff that we're providing that, you know, by law, we're not required to provide, that we'll be looking at those services.
Can you just elaborate just a little bit on some of the fluff?
Well, by law, police protection and water, water and sewer, we're, we're required to. So if you were looking at it, we're not required to do snow removal. The 1% tax when it was voted, it was not voted for operations and maintenance, so we have never used it for operations and maintenance. We are only using it for infrastructure. So to make a judgment call, to use that to pay for snow removal when that was not the intent of what it was voted on, that streets, streets are a fluff. Parks are a fluff. That means seriously looking at some of the services, what we're providing, and what cost we are fronting for those services to provide them. Our wants and our needs.
Thank you. Other questions for Treasurer Laura? I think I'll just close up by saying, we'll probably all define fluff differently. And so in the coming weeks, we start our budget hearings at the end of April, so I look forward to getting quite a bit of public comments, email, phone calls at these meetings. Please weigh in and let us know what services that you want us to see keep providing and where you think that we could survive with a little less. So please be involved at that level. And there's a And there's a public event on Thursday night at the Inn at Lander at 6 o'clock hosted by a couple of associations, the Rotary and the League of Women Voters, where County Assessor Tara Berg will present on the overall impacts of these property tax relief bills and how that'll impact local government revenue. So 6 o'clock Thursday up at the Inn at Lander, if you want to learn more from our county assessor. Attorney Phillips.
I don't have any updates tonight unless somebody has some questions for me.
Questions for our attorney? Being none, then clerk Fontaine.
Thank you. It is time for the city to seek requests for proposals for insurance services, so that will be coming in the next couple of months. Last time that RFP went out, it was for a five-year term, and we're talking about property insurance and things of that nature to cover our buildings and our vehicles. So that will be coming. I did send out the letters to the folks that are already on the low-income discount. I sent out 36 letters letting them know it's time to renew if they'd like to renew that program, which is six more letters than went out last year. So spread the word if anyone knows of anyone that might benefit from that program. The city does have a program for individuals in a certain income category to reduce their utility rates. I will be reaching out to all city employees, including council members, to renew their I-9 information. So just so you know that that's coming, and many employees have already heard from that. I've drafted a 2025 guide for Ward II City Council candidates, as well as an application in anticipation of tonight's events. So there will be information for anyone that's interested in that process, and it'll be on our website and here at City Hall as well. I took notes so that I could give a more complete update, so that's all I have, unless someone has questions for me.
Appreciate it. Any questions for our clerk?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to new business action items. And our first and only action under this category is accepting the resignation of Councilmember Missy White. I would entertain a motion to accept that resignation. Her resignation letter is in your packet.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Larson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cox. Any discussion?
A question for Adam. I'm assuming I'm not supposed to vote on this? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Then we'll take the votes. Councilman Josh Hahn.
Yes.
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 And.
Abstain.
And abstain from Councilwoman White, and I vote yes. So that motion passes with one abstention and to count five yes votes. Thank you, Councilmember White, for your pending resignation in advance of the events to follow here. Now moving on to new business non-action items. We've switched these two per our amended agenda. So Attorney Phillips, if you would administer the oath of office to Missy White as Mayor of Lander.
Yes, I don't know if we need.
I state your name. You solemnly swear that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wyoming, that I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or equipment, for cause to be done by my office, that I discharge the duties of my office.
Actually, Mayor White, there's no microphone here. I'm not sure why. Is there? Oh, it's hidden. I'm sorry. You should move then. Great. Wanted to keep you with the microphone. Your meeting, Mayor White.
Thank you. I want to take a moment, a personal privilege in this. I take the seat with a variety of mixed emotions. One, the obvious one of, of course, sorrow at the passing of Mayor Richardson. He was a tremendous advocate for the city of Lander. He worked really hard to make things better for our community, and also, of course, the loss of him as a colleague. And also likewise, very grateful to have the opportunity to serve my beloved community of Lander. It's been my home for nearly 40 years now. Hard to believe that, but 40 years have gone by in this wonderful place, and it's an honor to be able to serve in this new way as well. And likewise, I'd like to extend my gratitude to you, Councilmember Stubble, for, you know, what you thought was going to be occasionally running a meeting and maybe signing some checks, but instead, your leadership in stepping in to guide staffs thoughtfully, responsibly, with really steady leadership through this time period has been much appreciated. It's tough to show strong leadership in challenging times, and you've done that very admirably. So thank you for that. All right. Next on the agenda is the administering the corporal swearing-in ceremony, and Chief Peters would like to do that.
I think you should address the people. Yeah, Chief, you need a mic.
Can you hear me? Okay. Come on up. Okay. We're going to do the oath in a second, but I'm going to take my liberty there and talk in for a second now. I can tell you from being a police chief, this is a very proud moment, and I truly mean that. You know, this is what you're seeing in front of you. You're seeing the future, the future leaders of the Lander Police Department. You know, this is their first step up. It's taken them a lot of time. This was not an easy process. It was a very rigorous process that they went through, and they've shined through on this. So you got Officer Corporal, sorry, I'm calling him Officer Corporal Halsmer. Halsmer's been with us for 12 years. The one thing about law enforcement that sometimes gets unknown is just the fact of it's a thankless job. I mean, it really is. We get beat up. These guys get beat up every which angle. We're always wrong, you know, and in turn, the stress and just what you deal with is overbearing at times. So in that sense, I want to thank the wives that are here and the family for being patient. And I truly mean that. You know, I spent my whole career, and I could tell you, you don't realize the toll because we get into cruise control. We don't realize the toll and the neglect, the unintentional neglect that ends up with the family of missing holidays, missing supporting events. You know, the impatience, the aspect of not unwinding after a stressful night, and they come home and how's your day? I'm doing perfectly fine. Leave me alone. You know, those moments. So just want to say thank you, because you know what? The wives and the family don't get thanked enough. That's the downside, and really, that's the fault of the administration on my side is, you know what, we need to do more. The problem is we get so caught up in the rat race sometimes. But let's go back to Corporal Halsmer here. He's been with us for 12 years. Jake has put in a lot of work. I'm very proud of Jake. Just in the four years I've been here, watching his growth and watching how far he's come. Not that he was lacking by any means, but you know what? He's ready. He's shown that, you know what? He's got the intelligence, you know, the thoughtfulness, just the whole package when it comes down to it. You know, I'm very proud of Jake and how far he's come. And you know what? I have no doubt that these two, both of them, not only Jake, but David here, are going to go a long way in this career. This is just their first step. This is their first step into leadership, and you know what? They got a very bright star going. So thank you, Jake. And then you got David, David Milovich. I won't tell you that he started his career with me in Riverton eight years ago, and I didn't call him by his correct name for a whole year. I don't know what I called him. I think I called him Bill or something. And I legitimately didn't know I was calling him his wrong name, and he literally just, that's just the personality he has and how good of a person he is. Not once did he correct me until a year later, and I was floored, you know, that I called him the wrong name for a year. But I can't be more proud of David. Man, he started his career and, you know, worked through a lot of hard times over in Riverton, ended up down in Colorado. You know, he woke up and realized, you know what? Outside of Denver's not for you, son. Come back. So he came back to us, but just the experience he's been able to get, you can see it when you deal with David. He shines through when it comes to, you know, what he knows, what he can offer, and just, you know, for both of them, just how well they deal with people. And that's where I'm really proud in the aspect of, sometimes we get caught up in the rat race, and we're pretty rough sometimes. I'm sure everybody's dealt with us. We're just on edge, you know what? I'm done. How we deal with people can get a little brutal at times, not bad, but brutal, where, you know what? These guys always have the patience. So if the wives would like to come up, if you would like, we'll do the oath. So David, repeat after me. On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency I serve. Congratulations. And Jake has a future army. This is our future police department right here. Come on up, guys. Tell you what, all kids are cute. These are the cutest little ones, I tell you. Okay. Okay, repeat after me. On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency I serve.
We are lucky folks to live in a community with such dedicated folks willing to serve. Let's now move on to number nine, the consent agenda. There are a number of things on the consent agenda I suspect we'll want to gain information on before we vote on that, but first I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motioned by Councilmember Cox. Can I get a second?
A second.
And a second by Councilmember Stubble. All right. I assume there's some questions here.
I do have questions, Mayor.
I am not surprised.
I just want to clarify, I might be missing something within these loan agreements, and that is, the math that I was doing wasn't equating. And so when I look at the 1.5, the reduction from 2.5 to 1.5%, that is not what the totals indicate. So I think I'm missing something within the equation, and I... Am I making any sense? So within those loan agreements, if you look at the totals, and I'm going to them right now, but it shows on several of them, and for some reason, I'm getting well more than 1.5% when I do the, when I do the math, so from the totals themselves, over the course of the loan.
Some of the difference might be, so when, initially when this happened, the savings is about $412,000 in interest. Well, what we did when we, you know, so then they gave you the option to reduce your payment, but then that would have taken these loans out further. We kept our payment amounts at the same amount that we were paying at the 2.5% interest in anticipation of being able to pay those off sooner so that when these SRF loans for these next batch of projects start coming due, we'll have these loans paid off to be able to incur more debt. So if you're off something, it's probably because we kept our payments the same amount and not, and we didn't reduce them to what we could have reduced them down to, but it would have taken out the length of the loan. And it's also the timing of when they receive the payments. So we make principal payment, like the water treatment plant refinance. We pay $185,000 a year on that. Well, the principal payment alone is $153,000, just because we're, you know, that started in 2005. It was originally a USDA loan at 7.5%. I had to find another state agency to take it over, so it was a deal, and we got it for 2.5. So now at the 1.5, we're really saving because that loan really started out at 7.5%.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll draw attention to the DW 194 loan authorization report. And in there, it starts off with the payment July 2024 of $115,040.20. And then the rate of the interest rate is 1.5%. Is that correct?
Yeah, 1.5 is correct.
And then the, and then it equals the interest there of $17,744.36.
Are you looking at the Amendment 1 to Number 194?
I'm actually looking at the loan authorization report itself. I know that I'm missing something, but that is not 1.5%. And the total certainly isn't either. So the total is $1,199,387.60, and the interest is $97,754.60. And the interest is 97,754.04. That's not 1.5%.
Yeah, I would have to see what you're looking at because I'm not seeing it.
Okay. And I can come in and visit more. I just, I think that this is worth noting. I would like to see where where this is. Is anybody else following me at all? No? Okay.
Well, on my original numbers, so we're sitting at at 6:30 24, we're sitting at about $5 million in debt. That's $585,000 a year. We pay out of the enterprise fund just for our debt service alone to 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 pay for those loans. In that amount, we are paying principal payments of $423,000 a year. So we're paying very little in interest. Our interest is, you know, that we're paying annually is minimal, especially at the one and a half percent. But I think what's got you messed up is just because we're paying, the loan agreement might be saying the old payment amount, but we're paying, we we stuck with the original payment so that we can get these paid off.
Yeah, I think you just answered the question in the sense of it's not the totality of the loan, it's the portion of the loan that we're paying at that percentage.
Right.
Thank you. I knew I was missing something, but I couldn't establish what. So thank you for that clarification.
So with this game plan, this has us, they, this would be our last loan would be paid off in 38, but then the next few years, we have a couple loans knocking off each year. And then we could assume new debt with those new projects. And then that interest rates point to five.
Other questions? Okay, we can vote on the consent agenda. Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 And yes. Thank you. Moving on to 10A, approve second reading ordinance 2025-3 Sentry Link Franchise. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any questions on this? Okay, seeing none. Call for the question, Councilman Josh Han.
Yes.
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 And yes. All right, on to 11, new business action items. So we'll do first the two added items. So one, motion to remove Tammy Hightshew from the municipal court account. Could I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Stubble, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any questions about this or explanation needed?
Actually, when I got ahold of the bank to get all the signatures, we didn't realize that we still had Tammy signing on the municipal court account that she was authorized. And as you all know, she retired three years ago.
Yeah.
I I've never signed a court check. Teresa, the judge has signed all of them, but it's just a safeguard.
Yeah, I guess better late than never applies. That item, emphasis on late, right? Right? Any questions? Okay, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 And yes. All right, second item, move to add Captain Kelly Wa to the inter itinerant account. Can you give us a brief explanation of that?
That is a fund when people come upon hard times that they can come in and talk to the police department. Churches contribute to that fund. It's just so that they have two signers because currently it's myself and Chief Peters. It would just allow another body to be able to sign.
Thank you. Can I get a move to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Dan Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any additional questions?
Uh, Mayor White. Thank you. Uh, Treasure Laura, churches do contribute to that, other entities, are those all privately donated funds? What else goes into that fund?
Everything that I've ever seen donated have been have have come from churches. Like the Catholic Church, for years, we did a collection for the poor and that's specifically what the money was given to was to that that fund.
Is it solely donations though, or are there some city funds?
Nope, it's all donations.
Great. Thank you to those who are donating. Thank you.
May I just make a comment really quick in reference to that, that you can also utilize that community services block grant funds for those types of services as well? That that could be a referral from the city directly to Fremont County Independence Alliance. Independence Alliance of Fremont County, excuse me.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, call for the question, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 And yes. All right, now on to A, approve first reading ordinance 2025-4, and ordinance fixing and determining the mill levy necessary to be levied to raise sufficient money by general tax to meet the current expenses of the City of Lander for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Moved by Councilman Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any questions, comments about this? All right, we'll call for the question, Councilman Josh Han.
Yes.
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 And yes. Item B, authorize Mayor White as a signatory on all City of Lander accounts.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Stubble. Any other comments, questions? Okay, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 And Adam, I likewise assume I need to abstain from this.
Technically, the mayor doesn't vote unless there's a vote to tie break.
Great. All right. All right, next, adopt the housing authority bylaws updated February 18, 2025. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve the adoption of the housing authority bylaws updated February 18, 2025.
Second.
Great. Moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Dan Hahn. Comments, questions for this topic? Okay, seeing none. Call for the question, Councilman Josh Han.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
All right. Next item, D, authorize the mayor to sign the updated MOU between the City of Lander and the Lander Economic Development Association. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second. Moved by Councilman Dan Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Cox.
And we have to amend amend this motion?
There's a suggested amendment, yes.
The the original, it's it's line two. Line two reads, the city will allow LITA to present a budget request utilizing funds from the Wyoming Business Council revenue recapture projects during the annual budget process. It is going to going to be changed to, the city will allow LITA to present a budget request, including an amount in excess of Wyoming Business Council revenue recapture during the annual budget process. And I'll note that the this revenue capture is the the payments coming from Maven.
Right. So you're making that as a amendment?
An amendment.
Making that amendment? Okay. Yeah. Can we get a motion to approve the amendment spoken by Councilmember Hahn?
So moved. As amended.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments, questions?
Mayor White? This is amendment we're making tonight. Is LITA's aware of this change?
Yes, it actually came from LITA's request.
Thank you.
All right, do you know more? Call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 And Adam, just a point of order. So we voted on the amendment, do we now need to vote on the amended MOU?
Correct.
Okay. So with that, we need to now have a motion to approve the LITA MOU as amended.
So moved.
I think that motion's on the table already. Didn't Councilman Hahn make that when we first started discussion?
He he brought up the amendment. So we need a need a second, please.
I'll second that.
Okay, motioned by Councilman Larson, seconded by Councilmember Stubble to to approve the MOU as amended. I call for the question, Councilman Josh Han.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Right, motion passes. Next, we have authorize the mayor to sign contract for services with Ardua Group, Inc. for design and bidding services for the Propoja River Park Entrance Development Project in the amount of $71,400. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Larson. Ray Jean, can you give us the the overview on this, please?
You bet. As a reminder, this is CDBG money and therefore it is federal money. Typically, for a contract or task order, an amount under $75,000, it would not go through the council. But in order to meet all the federal guidelines, I asked to put this and another one on the agenda tonight so that we would have a record that the council approved this for the federal reimbursement requirements.
Great, thank you.
I do have a question, Mayor White.
Yep.
Did we go through an RFP process for this or was just this the only?
So this RFP process was through the 2024-26 General Services Contract. And where we put out, or we where we accepted multiple contracts under a three-year general services contract for contracts or task orders under $75,000. CDBG took that RFP process and reviewed it and said it met the federal requirements. So then that's why I thought I would put the task order on the agenda.
I do appreciate that on the agenda. I would like to have further discussion about this general services. How we, our procedure through this, because it does, even though it's under a certain amount of money, there is still a considerable amount of city funds that, and I'm just not as familiar with that process. And I guess for me, it would be a little more informative if I had a better understanding of the costs that's associated with engineering, the costs that's associated with these general contract fees, or general services contracts, those types of things, so that we know exactly where these dollars, especially as we are moving into potential revenue concerns.
Yeah, that could be something that we ask staff to to inform us about, you know, above above a dollar amount below $75,000 so that we're aware of how funds are being spent.
Right. Thank you.
If I may, be happy to add that when Lance gives the capital infrastructure project, improvement project update, I could just add a overview of how we were doing those task orders. And then that is in our financial statements, since she already she already looks at all those professional services agreements.
Perfect. Thank, thank you. That would work session. That'd be beneficial for me. I hope it would be for the rest of the council. Thank you, Ray.
And it's also a way to get that out to the public as well, which is also important. Okay, other comments, questions? Okay, Matt, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Next item, approve and authorize the mayor to sign 307 shredding LLC confidential document destruction agreement. You get a motion?
Move to approve the authorization or for the mayor to authorize the mayor to sign the 307 shredding LLC confidential document destruction agreement.
Right, and a second?
Second.
Great. Moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Dan Hahn. Comments, questions from the council?
I do. Leave it to me tonight. One, this is something that's really important as far as the shredding of confidential information. And I think that, you know, for years, it's been manually done by staff, I would imagine. So that we have an a company here locally that will do this is really great. And and I looked at the cost and it was not cost, I mean, it was affordable for sure. My question is, because it wasn't clear, although it did state, when you're looking at confidential information, how does that, how do then we trans transport that to them and then ensure that there's no issue with with yeah, information leaking?
They they, it's a, it's a big garbage can, essentially on wheels. It has a padlock on it. They, we, it's in court because originally that's where it started at. We used to put it in Western Printing charges, $20 for a bag. And by the time you add a few files to it, you've spent 20 bucks. So for $75, we get a a complete container. So like I just purged my files of my retention that I have. We we are still electronical, but these were hard copies that were, that had met the five year rule. Rochelle had me fill out the proper paperwork for showing what was being destructed. And then it just gets put in that, they lock it up, and the guy comes and picks it up. And I believe he shreds it in our parking lot.
Just a follow-up question on that. When their destruction, they're doing shredding and they don't have to burn or bury. They are just doing the, you know, there's now a way that you can shred that's.
I think it's a double cut shred.
I think you're right.
It's pieces.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, they're turning it into confetti.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, other comments, questions? Okay, call for the questions. Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 All right, we're gonna skip over G. Moving on to H, authorize the mayor to issue notice to proceed to Alexander Excavation, Inc., for the Bishop Randall Water and Paving Improvement. Could I get a motion in a second, then we can ask Lance for more.
So moved.
Second.
Great, moved by Councilmember Dan Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. And Lance, can you give us the the update here?
Yes, this is a a project that's gonna get underway this year. And so this is something that we've already talked about, the agreement and everything as far as the awards in place and the contract documents. So this is the hospital extension, waterline replacement, widening of the pavement, replacement of the pavement on our street. Originally, we had questions if that was ours a while back and then found out through our previous agreements at some point, we took that in and we weren't maintaining it. So this puts that street in a much better position in the long term, as well as upgraded utilities. And we're using a grant that we received on this project. So we've got ways that we're working with the hospital up there to reduce impact and make sure that they can still gain access to everything they need to.
Great. And do you have a, is there an estimated start date for this project? Is it too early yet?
I believe they're gonna start once they can. So it's more weather related at this point and they don't want to get into the big snowstorms, but eager to start.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Other comments, questions?
Just a thought too, that it does say the effective date of this contract is October 29, 2025. Is that a typo where it should be 24 or it is?
No, this is the ARPA money for the Table Mountain Living Community. And it was authorized to be put out under that in order to meet our deadlines for the contract award. You guys approved the award and the contract in October, on that October date. And we have not done the notice to proceed yet. So just a chain of command and a lot of paperwork for spending some more federal dollars.
Did you say 25?
I did.
Yeah, so it should be 24.
Okay, then, yes, that's.
Thanks for catching that.
It's not our document. It's it's a document that's prepared by Apex, I believe.
Yeah, it's a joint document. We will fix that.
Okay. So that would be, that would then say the effective date of the contract is October 29, 2024. Perfect, is that correct? Okay.
Okay, good pick.
Mayor White, if I may, I just, you know, we moved through a bunch of different steps on the paperwork on all these road improvement projects. And so I just want to mark the moment to say like, this is it, right? We're getting back those in the ground here, getting some new asphalt. It's one of many this year, and we'll hear more in a couple of weeks. But it's an exciting moment after a long series of discussions and waiting and and signing. So I'm glad to see us getting these improvements made for our town. Thank you.
Agreed, not to mention getting the external funding as well, also an important part of the process. All right, hearing no other converser question, I'll call for the question, Councilman Jay Hahn.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Moving on. Moving on to I, authorize mayor to sign engagement letter with Holt, Holt House Appraisal Group for land appraisal for CDBG Propoja River Park Jefferson Street Grant. Could I get a motion?
Mayor, I move authorization for you to sign the engagement letter with Holt House Appraisal Group for the appraisal, uh, for CDBG Propoja River Park Jefferson Street Grant. I should have said so moved.
Yeah, that is simpler. Um, could I get a second?
Second.
Great, moved by Councilmember Stubble, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Uh, Ray Jean, can we turn to you for a little more information about this?
Absolutely, Mayor. Um, this is also in conjunction with the Ardua Group, um, task order that you just signed for $71,400. Uh, because we are using federal funds for this CDBG grant, even though this is a very small, uh, $5,000 agreement that wouldn't normally come through council, in order to get the reimbursement from the federal program, they asked that I take it through a council vote. So that's where we're at. This is actually to purchase, uh, property, to, uh, private property, continue Jefferson Street into the new park grant.
Great. Comments, questions from council?
Got a question, please.
Councilman?
Is there inhabitants on this property? There's people living there?
There is not. This is currently, uh, an open space because it was a 60-foot wide easement. Uh, it's still on private property, but there are no homes that will have to be moved or removed for the enactment of this purchase. We do have a willing seller at this time. Of course, it will always depend on the price and what the federal, uh, grant will allow.
So on this picture of the triangle, it's just the two white sections, correct? The two white parcels?
Yes, so, uh, there's two triangles in there. There's one that's a, well, there's one triangle to the north that they are appraising in case that owner is willing to sell that. Right now, he said he's not, but the appraisal is for that because it was authorized when we applied for the grant years ago. Uh, what we're trying to purchase is a 60-foot wide strip straight off of Jefferson Street. So you'll see there's two separate pieces there. Okay.
Yes. Okay.
Hey, other comments, questions from council? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Last in this category, J, authorize the mayor to sign subscription service agreement between QT Pod LLC and City of Lander Hunt Field Airport. Could I get a motion?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Dan Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Which, Shari, I see your light on. I guess it's you.
This is a software that runs our airport fuel system. And they, it needed to be updated. They updated all their contract agreement. They did get rid of the indemnification language that we argued so much for the first time and won. So it is revised and Adam has looked at it.
Comments, question from the council? Okay, seeing none. Call for the question, Councilman Jay Larson.
Yes.
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 All right, motion passes. Uh, we need a motion to, um, move to executive session. Councilman Dan Hahn.
Can I make one comment? I, I was, I was talking to some people in Riverton, um, a couple of weeks ago. And the guy, uh, he's got a business and he was, when they did Sunset over there in, uh, in Riverton. When they did the, it was basically what, what we're gonna be looking out, out here. Um, when they tore that up, he had no access into his property. He went through all of his savings and ended up having to get a loan. And, um, and I asked him, you know, hey, did, did the city, when they did this project, did they have anything in the project to protect people, to protect businesses? And they did not. Um, I've talked to a few people, uh, on this line. And, um, I, I, I don't know, I, I know there's different ways to do construction, but, um, I, I guess, I guess it's, uh, I'm bringing this up so we can have our eyes open because the last thing we'd want to do would be to, uh, have a real nice project, but, but put people out of business. And so, anyway, it was interesting to talk to him and I wanted to bring it up.
No, that's great. And we do have some provisions as far as how much can be opened up without being put back and how many, uh, main arterials we can close and then leaving things open. So we have restrictions. Um, but we also need to get the contractor having the, they've said they've talked individually with the landowners, but we need to start having some, uh, open meetings and open dialogue between the contractor and things like garbage and access and how things are gonna go. So, you know, the contractors are a point of contact for that and we're gonna have to make sure that they're doing what we spelled out.
Uh, yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking, you know, uh, early would be the night, you know, to get people thinking about this and, you know, not, not, uh, after the fact. And, and so people can think about different accesses and, and maybe some sort of communication uh, with, with the business owners to make sure that, uh, everybody, you know, I mean, we know if somebody's having problems. I mean, and, and, and a few of the people I've talked to, they, they're, they're concerned about revenue loss.
Sure. And, you know, we, uh, Nick met with all the landowners, because we actually awarded this, you know, last year and they could have started in the fall. So Nick with High Country is their point of contact. But we'll also put out that information and that'd be readily available. So as the city, you know, if you have issues, uh, you know, to talk to this person, we'll want to see them follow that. But also they could talk to us about what they're having. Um, my, my hope was they were gonna start in two places on this project to make sure they were done in a season. Uh, I'm a little concerned because they're just gonna start on the, the 100 block and work from one end to the other. So, you know, that's great as far as the inconvenience, you know, you'll see it coming and you don't have too much disturb. But I hope that, uh, weather cooperates and they can actually get through all the blocks to the other end.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, going back to this, could I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Move to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cox to adjourn to executive session. Call for the question, Councilman Jay Larson.
Yes.
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 All right. Okay, just, just a couple of minutes left. If I could get, get a motion to, folks, we got just to, give it, give us two minutes. Yeah, Lance? Just give us a couple of minutes here. Uh, but we love having folks engage. If we could get a motion to adjourn executive session?
Move to adjourn executive session.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Dan Hahn to adjourn executive session. Call for the question, Councilman Jay Larson. Oh, sorry, Jay, I keep looking this way. Jay Hahn.
Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes. And how about we move to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Let's do it.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Call for the question, Councilman John Larson. This time I'm gonna look at you and call your name.
Yes.
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 So moved. Uh, do want to note though, for folks who are still here, we have a number of upcoming meetings, more than we typically have. So March 18th, we will have our, uh, strategic planning meeting, then our April 22nd meeting. We'll have a meeting on April 8th, also May 13th, and then so work sessions both on April 15th and coming up at the end of the month, March 25th. So we've got a, a few more meetings than we typically have. And as always, we welcome folks joining us. Have a good night, everyone.